I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask you to do a moment of reflection and tonight we want to remember Bob Merz. I don't know that Mr. Merz was on any of our committees or authorities per se, but he was always a big supporter of the city, be it fireworks, be it Christmas decorations, anything we ever needed, Bob was always one of the first ones there. So we just have a moment of silence for Bob. Slow call.
Priseng?
Here.
Shitman?
Here.
Reichtner?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Ister?
Any audience comment on any items on the agenda at this time? Okay. I know Brad wants to say a few words. I just want to mention again that the overwhelming effort put in by our fire department and by our police department and all the surrounding communities that came over to help us and everybody within Northumberland County, but when you think of the magnitude of what happened and all the different things that had to happen to keep everybody safe, not a single person was hurt that I'm aware of, it just speaks volumes for the ability of our fire departments and other police departments. So Brad, I know you have some particular...
Yeah, I'd actually like to point out a few departments in the area. Obviously, when the fire came out, it was pretty devastating at first because obviously we had 200 some inmates that really wasn't the city's responsibility, it was the county's, but obviously my job was to make sure the citizens of Sunbury were taken care of too and making sure that the prisoners got away. And we had to get them out safely too. So when I ended up calling, I called Point Township in Northumberland over, Chief Hankirk and Chief Cryer actually called all their guys in to help us out. I had an all-call to our department. Everybody came in but one or two just because of reasons they couldn't get here, but that's fine, but everybody came out. We had units from Stone to PSP, Sergeant Cromer, their station commander out there. You guys don't realize the phenomenal job he did of coordinating escorts out to the prisons. He just, he brought guys in from Milton, Montoursville, he had people coming. Snyder County had a lot of their units dump their departments into Sunbury. Ute County and the Buffalo Valley Regional was here. Vethelberg, Middleburg, Mount Carmel, Mount Carmel Township, Chief Holland Bush and Chief Owens with their guys actually came down. They let their guys come down and help us out. We must've had about 100 police officers in the city at that time. Honestly, between, like I said, and the sheriff's office, the County Sheriff's Office, they did a fantastic job getting everyone. Ute County Sheriff's Office, they came down with 13-9. We actually had constables from Harrisburg City come up to help us out with the evacuation of prisoners. I think Pastor Tru with the church next door, he, you know, he opened up that church so we could get them out of the prison and some were safe till, you know, because once we got them out of the prison, then it was a matter of transporting them out to Coe Township. Linda Culver was a big instrumental in getting that arranged and done because at that point we had nowhere, we had no idea where we were going to put them at that point. So she was very instrumental in giving us the ability to use Coe Township's prison out there to get them out of there. And then once we got them all out, Dale was there, I think once everything went smoothly, we got them onto the buses. Everybody was checked before they got on the buses twice. It was just, you know, somebody had asked me, "Do you have protocols and plans of operation for this?" And I think anybody in law enforcement, Steve will back me up on this. It doesn't matter what you have on paper, when it happens, you just got, hopefully everything came together. And I know one, the warden, the new warden, he did a fantastic job of keeping everybody calm. And one person come up to me and we were talking about stuff and they, they just basically said, "Well, how are you two so calm?" And it's like, "Well, we're the right people, place, and everything just goes smoothly." And it did. So I just want to thank all the local departments in the area and anybody that forgot, I apologize, but there was just so much outpour of support from every department in the area that just came and really stepped up when the city and the county really needed. So on behalf of Sunbury Police Department, I really do appreciate everybody that I mentioned what they did. There. And I would just add to that real quick, there was three particular officers that were there that day from our department. Corporal Bremmigen, Officer Heckman and Officer Hawkins actually went above and beyond what they needed to do to make sure stuff. Gary with his experience with the prison system was a big help with some ideas. Hawkins, he was there for the last prison fire. He was working when they had the last prison fire, so he kind of got things going. And Travis was basically my liaison between myself and anybody that needed questions. He just made things happen. The three of them made things happen and they got it done. So they were each given a combination of merit for their job well done at that prison fire. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks again. Snowball development plan. Mr. Reichtner?
Mike Young.
As you know, we've been working months now on the redevelopment project up on the north of Fourth Street and we've gotten to the point where we are in a workable state with SnoCo. Just to give you a little overview, the city engineer did a first review on the 12th of January. There was some deficiencies noted on his review for correction. On the 16th of December 2014, the county planning reviewed the project and approved it with no comment. The county conservation reviewed it. On the 8th of December '14, they had no issue with the project. Of course, the city council approved the stormwater waiver on the 22nd of December. The Sunbury Municipal Guarded Water and Sewer approved the issues with, or approved the project, no issues, on the 18th and the 23rd of December. And the city planning reviewed it on the 15th of this month and they approved it with the condition that deficiencies be corrected on the engineer's report. City engineer did a second review, actually we got the report today. All the deficiencies were corrected with the exception of the highway speed permit. So with all that said, I'm asking for approval of the plans with condition that the highway speed permit, pending with the condition that the highway speed permit be accepted by PennDOT for final approval. And that is now currently being reviewed by PennDOT.
Okay. Somebody got a motion, Rick?
Yeah, I'll look at a motion.
Need a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Jamie, you got a little late, but it'll...
I tried.
...come to yours, so I'm going to top your coat off anyway.
All right, thank you. This evening I have with me, or she was here before I, was Betsy Lockwood with our economic development staff at CEDOC. And first on the agenda, she is going to talk about the local access roads grant through ARC.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello there.
My name is Betsy Lockwood and I'm project development grants manager for economic development program at CEDOC. And I just gave you a draft of an ARC Appalachian Regional Commission Local Access Road Grant Application. It's to apply for $580,000 of ARC Local Access Road Funds. And the scope of work for the project is reconstruction of Chestnut Street from Third Street to 10th Street. And I have been talking with Jamie Schrader. I thought this could be a good project that could be potentially eligible for ARC Local Access Road Funds. Just a couple of things that I want to point out. ARC Local Access Road Funds are economic development funds. And that basically the impact that they like to see out of projects that are funded with ARC Local Access Road Funding are economic related. Jobs created, jobs retained, if a company is investing, significant investment into their, their plant machinery and equipment, they're doing an expansion, you know, capitalizing off of that. So I created the draft application for the ARC grant. It does not require match, however, DCED who helps allocate funding for the Appalachian Regional Commission likes to see what they call leveraged funds. So in addition to the ARC funding, we also have a non-ARC funded portion of this project which is considered leveraged funds. I did receive a letter of support for the application from the city of Sunbury, agreeing to own and maintain the road, which you already do now, but doing that even after the grant is submitted. However, what I do need and what's missing from this grant application are support letters that indicate the need for this road project. Support letters from businesses, particularly those types of businesses that provide family sustaining wages, Wise Markets, Sunbury Cheese, which is just off of Chestnut Street, and a number of those other types of businesses. I have one in here now, but we need other support letters to add into this application to demonstrate the need. And if they're going to be adding jobs, that would be important to note in the letter. If they would need to relocate because the roads are getting so bad, then they would need, they would want to indicate that in the letter. I have jobs retained, but really we can't count jobs retained unless a company would need to locate elsewhere, that would be considered job retention in this instance. So we'll need to adjust that. This is a draft application, so as more letters come in, we'll be able to adjust the letters based on the information that is included in those support letters. Are there any questions?
Yeah, we have a major project going on at, at the Albright, restoration of that building and so forth. A piece of that is economic development with that, is there any way we can tie that project into this grant?
Where is that located?
It's located at 5th and Chestnut Street, right on the street.
Yeah, right on the street. You're going to, I think that would be helpful, yes, definitely.
Okay, so that comes from SRI then? SRI is the one that's really driving that? Who would that come from?
Well, can it come from Albright?
It comes from the Albright?
Yeah, I think if it came from Albright, it would make a larger statement to the Appalachian Regional Commission. Now, ARC doesn't generally like to just fund projects that, that just, just any type of road project. They want to see, like I said, economic development related projects and any way we can tie that into the application is going to be important.
Thank you.
What is the deadline for the application?
Well, the deadline was January 31st. However, this, this project was brought up and kind of run through pretty quickly and there's a number, number of other approvals that need to be gained. For instance, we need to add this project to the project priority list at our CEDOC board directors meeting on Wednesday. Then this project would also need to be reviewed through the CEDOC Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the MPO members would need to agree to add this to the tip, the transportation improvement project listing. So there's a couple other approvals that we need to get before this project could be submitted. DCED who helps allocate ARC Access Road Funding is aware of this and I let them know that this project and probably another project will probably arrive to them before February 16th or before February 16th, which will be Monday. So we have additional time to pull this information together.
I sent a letter to all those businesses and asked them to get that to you. Do you want the contact information that you want to follow up with?
That might, that might be helpful, yeah, because I mean...
Because it was even sent to Sunbury and to Milton and guys around these down in that area.
And that, those were the type of letters that I'm definitely looking for that would be helpful. Even Wise Markets and other major employers that utilize Route 61 truck route.
Well, even a business that's not going to employ more people at this time, the fact that you can get in and out of it has to help their...
Those support letters would be helpful, but you can't count them against job retention. And we're going to be looking for numbers. We're going to want to quantify. So if Albright has a major project that they're working on, if we can quantify that type of information, you know, what's the amount of private sector investment that's going to be going into that? If there is a major plant expansion, what types of work is going to be going into that? You know, how, how much is it going to cost? Do you have to hire extra people coming up? If so, let's put it in the letter. Because anyone that had, that indicates job creation, we can count that in the application. And this would be, this is a competitive application. So the, the better we do on quantifying those important impacts, the better off we'll be.
And that's addressed to CEDOC or is that addressed to DCED or who, who is the letter to be addressed to?
You can address the letter to me or it could be addressed to city, you know, the city of Sunbury and you can forward to me if it can be done that way. Doesn't matter, as long as I get them, I make sure they're included in the application.
I sent a letter to SRI in regard to the Albright Center.
Okay.
I, so far I've had one contact and that's included at the end, yeah. And then, like I said, there's some other letters that we're going to need to obtain approval from the MPO that would have to get added to this application then. So this is definitely a draft format, but what you see here is all the forms and the narrative that would be included.
Okay, just to let you guys know, the only letter we got back was from the exclusive cuts barber shop. So we need more than one, that's for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay, we'll get you one from, from the Albright.
And I can help with talking points for the letter, whatever you, whatever you need. Okay?
So you have a card or something?
I, I think I do. I'll grab one for you. And I have another one, but it'd be helpful to have two draft copies. Do you need to have anyone else review?
There's no information here that would help us with the letter, though, right?
I mean, you can look at, you can look at the narrative and use some information from the narrative.
Okay.
Yeah, that application is for Phase Two of the Chestnut Street project, so we're starting to actively try to find funding for Phase Two. Phase One of the Chestnut Street project, we noticed to proceed was signed by the mayor, so they should be getting in here, GNR Charles, to get started on that here in the next couple weeks. So before too long, they'll be in here to get going on that. Speaking of Phase One of Chestnut Street, I have two originals of the professional services agreement with CEDOC for the administration of the Keystone Communities Grant for that Phase One. Basically, it just outlines, it's the same as what you see basically for a CDPG except this is state funding instead of federal funding. So there's nothing new or surprising in here that you haven't seen before. But if you want to review it, you know, and, and take action to approve, you're welcome to do that. If you'd rather wait and take action the next time, that's fine as well. But however you wish to approve the agreement for the, this is for the competitive, this is for, let me, oh, this is for the competitive, not for the Keystone. This is for the competitive community development block grant, not the Keystone grant, I'm sorry. I think we already have the Keystone one in place. So this is for the 2014 competitive for the CDPG. So this would be the same as what you usually see, except it's for competitive instead of entitlement funding, proceed to administration of that competitive grant for Phase One of Chestnut.
Is there deadlines to this? We need this tonight?
No, you do not need to do this tonight. If you, like I said, if you want to hold on to it and approve it next time or sign it, you know, at your leisure and send it back to me, that would be fine as well.
What was in your box? Did you guys get a chance to look at it? It was emailed to everybody.
Yeah, I got a couple.
I'll take care of it tonight. Anybody?
Sure.
Okay. National Ministry of Services Agreement is before you, everybody's had a chance to see it. Need a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second?
Priseng?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
I guess I had Keystone on the brain because I'm getting ready to process a payment for Keystone one and that's why that was on the brain. The demolition with the Keystone funds from the county, we are getting ready to demolish two additional properties that we just recently gained ownership of, 116 South 10th Street and 314 South 3rd Street. So I believe the owners of 116 South 10th have 30 days to clean out their belongings before we go in and do the demolition. So the agreement for the Keystone funds is with the city, so I was, I would ask that you please approve soliciting quotes for the demolition of those two properties following that 30-day period allowed for clean out of the 10th Street property. Again, it's 116 South 10th and 314 South 3rd, both of which are now owned by the city.
Okay, so motion is to solicitate courts to, to, for the demolition of, what is it, 1165 South 10th?
1116.
1165?
I'm sorry, 1116. I can't read the...
I got you confused. 314 South 4th?
3rd.
3rd.
All right, 314 South 3rd, 116 South 10th.
Yes.
You don't want to tear down the wrong property. Someone home from work will go into the house. That's not good.
Don't blame me, it's not my fault.
All right, need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then the only other thing is, web and update, the Oppenheimer Playground Basketball Court Project and Tennis Courts will be getting ready to bid out in the March timeframe for award in April. So John Pukovic is currently working on those drawings and we're going to get everything out to bid in March so that when we award, we're closer to the time when they can actually do the paving work and get that project done. Otherwise, everything's moving forward. Like I said, Chestnut Street is getting ready to move forward and Betsy's getting ready to submit the application for that ARC funding. If you want to send me or Betsy or both of us the list of those businesses, we'll see if we can get anywhere with getting those letters. It is always a struggle, but we'll see what we can get.
Jamie, when we do this repaving at the, at the tennis courts?
Yes.
Is there going to be changes made, like adding pickleball courts?
No, there's, at this point, the CDPG project is, is simply up, making upgrades and improvements to the basketball courts and tennis courts as is. There's nothing on, in the CDPG funded project for any additional recreation to be added.
Okay, so two ways to change it?
Yes, for the CDPG funding, we have to do something different. I mean, we have to do a revision or modification to a different activity. You have time to do that if you wish, but that would be something you'd have to discuss with Councilman Ister if that's his baby and I just do what he says.
We'll, we'll talk...
Pass the ball, see. Right back to you.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, you, you guys talk about it and then work with John and see how you want to handle that. Recreation isn't eligible, fundable activity, so I'm sure we could change it. It would just mean we'd have to do a modified activity to add that.
But it has to be a multi-use, I mean, it's nothing but asshole, so we have, we have to find a way to use it.
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to paint lines there, I mean, that's...
Yeah, that doesn't change it.
I don't care. Right, I mean, that's really, right.
Get me back to the, the letters. Sunbury Cheese and guys, this is just in the discussion stage, but they had, they had talked about doing an expansion on their property, a million dollar expansion.
Oh, okay.
So I'll go down and talk to them and try and find...
Yeah, I mean, even if it's just a blink of someone's eye, it'd be great to mention it.
Well, it's more than that because they already, they already, I think the cabinet upgraded or about ready for the money.
Oh, good. That would be wonderful.
But yeah, I will find it down. I don't know if it'll be this weekend, but it'll be this week or maybe next week.
Yeah, 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 next week would be good if we could get, you know, follow up in with the businesses to probably get something then by the second week of February, they'll be just, so. Anything else for me?
I don't believe so.
All right, well, if you don't mind, then we're going to scoot out of here. Thanks, guys.
While we're talking about redevelopment, there was another property, just to let you know that the redevelopment authority acquired with that 116 South 10th, that was 449 Ray Street. That'll be on the, that'll be on the oxygen block coming up here in the spring. That was 449 Ray Street. So it's a gentleman that sat here in a meeting one time and they were going to buy it. I don't know what happened to that. Remember, they asked for some more time because he was going to buy it from them and fix it up and something happened, they never sold it.
It's a local program.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it came to one, you know, wanted to build this one.
That's correct.
And they didn't want to get it, but somehow either we grew our feet, something happened, you know?
The sale fell through between Lovett and the young gentleman who was going to purchase it. And the sale fell through, Mr. Lovett basically tore his attorney out, decided to go to the judicial sale. And then the redevelopment authority stepped in and said, "Instead of it going to judicial sale, let's go ahead and acquire it. It was cheaper than we knew it was going to be judicial sale access." And then we felt sort of, judicial sale. Is that structural access? Wait, you're asking everybody if he's on Twitter.
Well, it's not on Mother City, so I guess I will be on the next list. Scottenover. Mr. Reichtner again?
Mike.
Mike.
We had received application from Skoll Oil Company. They submitted a minor subdivision plan for the location there for 10th and 11th Street at their filling station. Basically, what they submitted was for a minor subdivision to separate their filling stations from the construction site. With that, they asked for a stormwater waiver since there is going to be no proposed improvement or construction and it's not going to increase the 10% stormwater runoff. It's just something very basic, paperwork trail, basically. Sort of like the, the cycle subdivision we did up on Saturday Street. They're just subdividing, subdividing into two lots from one.
It's pretty much an ownership issue.
Yeah.
It's what it is. John has no problem with it?
At this point, it's being reviewed by John, but this is a step we need to do for John's review.
Okay.
Any, any further development would have to come before the city anyway, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So that motion's made.
Need a second?
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Priseng?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Cooper Payen voices, John.
We have $162,193.79 in general fund expenses and $2,996.65 in liquid fuel, which is rock salt. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Need a second?
I'll send you.
Deal with it.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Any audience comment?
I'm Carol Mazzio. I just had a question about the Chestnut Street, which you brought up about it being Route 61 truck route. So is that maybe our road or a state road?
It's our road and she said 61. Theoretically, Martha Street was 61.
Right, Martha Street 61, but that's Chestnut's truck route, right?
Well, they refer to it as like Aldernick 61.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's our street.
It's still ours, okay.
But we can apply, since it's used for trucks, we can apply for grants through the concept of it being a truck route.
Well, it's more, what is, or...
Well, definitely, there's no question about that, that's true.
Okay, I just wondered when she said that, it's like, well, okay, it's still ours.
Yes. Can I? Give your hand up.
The money that we, you, the city gets from sale of these properties, why can't that be used for like, is that an area of the search additional?
Well, it's generated to keep buying and improving them. It's a blatant project is what it's used for. So the money, all the money that we have, instead of using city money, the goal always was to sell these properties and keep them in there so we don't keep coming, redevelopment authority doesn't keep coming back and use the tax dollars. So their goal is to just re, keep recycling that so we can keep buying the old properties and tear them down or sell them.
Could that money be used to keep control on duty?
The city would have to change. The original agreement was for the redevelopment authority to fund itself when we established that, we got it working. We could go back and look at that ordinance and see if we could reroute that money back to the city general fund. But right now, it's set up to keep, to keep using that so they don't come back to the city every year and say, "We need $100,000, we need $100,000 here." You know, we got redevelopment authority.
The redevelopment authority is a separate authority, just like the municipal authority is, or just like the housing authority is, and they all operate independently of the city. The city appoints the members of the board, but they operate independently. So just like, we don't like to mess with the, with the municipal authority or the housing the housing authority, they run their own business, but, but we sort of have given the, the redevelopment authority that same status, so it would not be an easy process, could be done, but not easy.
I just think it's a, it, it's a concern to me anyway, um, us losing a patrolman for this. And I just think that.
It's an option.
I just think.
But Jamie, when we get federal or state money for demolition of lighted properties, that sustained system like John just explained. Just somewhere along the line, just give us, take 10,000 out and that doesn't work that way. Because they're refunding lighted properties, it's of course a major issue. Of course, cities, somewhere in North Island County, we're the leader in cleaning up lighted properties. And that's, you know, lighted properties also run, run a city or a town that also because of the fact that they're generating carports, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you, you did it right, because I forgot, just like 116 South Tenth Street gets torn down with Keystone grant money, 1449 could be bought with this money. Every time, every home, believe me, the redevelopment authority has this discussion with Jamie every meeting we have, because if block grant money's used, you have to use this, if this money's used, you have to use that. So I guess I shouldn't leave you with the impression that that 115,000 dollars we got all is sitting in that pot and we can use it any way we want to use it. But this Keystone grant, we actually have county money, that's all the county money is involved in it, yeah, too, so.
Say that again?
It's a Keystone grant, North Island County actually gave us some money, uh, they pretty much took our idea and our success story that we had in the light project, so they generated some money, matching money, gave them that type of stuff. So anyway, any money that's attached to that has to be, certain things have to be done. So there are specifications per property as far as that goes, but it's, it's still a good point to look at.
And, and the redevelopment authority can do things that the city can't. They have authority under state law and so forth, for instance, uh, what, what we entered, referred to earlier is if, if the redevelopment authority takes a property, the mortgage goes away, the taxes go away, the city can't do that. So I mean, that's why we have that separate entity called the redevelopment authority, because they have a lot more power, actually, than the city does when it comes to fighting blight.
Told you the, a property is second lease, so it's a chance to get it back from the city. That's one benefit that we've seen, uh, that the, uh, properties that the redevelopment authority has already been able to acquire is already generating taxes for the city and that's just another additional benefit other than cleaning up a neighborhood or, um, again, bringing up a property to back to code before it's completely, um, it has to be demolished completely. Certainly, there's some really bad properties in the city that it'd be nice to save them before it's too late, so.
I think also with the C D B G Act and that, if I'm understanding this correctly, anything that the C D B's involved in, that they, they fund or put money up, if we do not use it, continue using the money we're seeing from them, we must return to C D B G the amount of money they invested.
That's the current amount that we're looking at, or like for C D B G, if we don't use it, it goes back at the end of 2017. So between now and the end of 2017, figure projects and then if we don't use it, it'll go back into the general C D B G funds. The other thing is that, um, it's also tied to low and moderate housing opportunities.